Potential for a win-win-win. I marvel at the workload the planning board has been dealing with historically, but certainly in the last 18 months, it's unprecedented and it doesn't appear to be waning much as we look forward. So I worry about your stamina and your ability to keep doing what you've been doing. And so if there's a way to help alleviate some of that workload in front of you, I see that as something worthwhile pursuing. Similarly, I think there could be benefits to staff in terms of just efficiency. And lastly, I think certainly the development community would see some value in a streamlined process. And make no mistake, this isn't about cutting corners by any stretch. It's just about kind of simplifying the review process, but still holding the same standards. So pleased to be part of the conversation and I'll be quiet. There's a sign that says your two minutes was up.
And Nick, as I said.
Karen, did you have anything you wanted to chime in with on this? Or Jemel again?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo everything that Jay and Tom have said. You know, obviously, streamlining is great for everyone, particularly if it's streamlining that achieves all the goals that you want to achieve with the review process. You know, Jay and I have been talking about industrial reviews since way before the Downs. And like he said, it's just one of those things. We've got so many things before us, we just hadn't done that before. But other communities are using it. And I will say, I think the thing that Jay and I've seen is that it's used very differently all across the different communities. There is a focus, I think, on industrial particularly, but they all do it in slightly different ways. So there's no right way or wrong way. And I think that's what we're looking for is what makes sense for Scarborough. But certainly from an energy and streamlining standpoint, this just makes so much sense.
Thanks, Karen. Did you have anything on this?
No, not this time. I'll jump in as you guys discuss your questions or whatever.
Maybe Angela too, just kind of get more perspective if any was needed to be added.
I know Angela had mentioned herself.
I am on and I'll help any technical questions or comments as we go through. Just let me know.
Thanks, Angela.
And Nick, as I said.
So I think, go ahead, Jay.
I was just going to mention, we do have Dan and Rocky as attendees. And so, you know, if we want to see if they want to say anything early on here, or they're just along for the ride, or how would you like to handle other participants?
I think, for at least for what it's worth on my end, I think it's worthwhile to hear the applicant's point of view. I mean, we get on the board level, be in the staff level, I think we clearly see some of the things, but being an applicant probably behind the scenes also comes with its own challenge when going through the process that we have. So I'm not opposed to hearing and give us a little, you know, a little information on what it's, you know, what they see as their challenges and how they think that this could be a smoother process. So I have no problem with them weighing it, understand their perspective a bit more.
All right, I'm going to click the allow to talk button here.
And actually, first, I am remiss in saying, I missed Ken on this. And did you have anything you wanted to add?
I'm here to listen and learn. In my 35 years here at the town of Scarborough, I think I used something very similar. I developed a private way. So I had to go through all the typical requirements with, you know, wetlands impact and sanitation district and everything, but it was more of a staff review through Angela. And so I'm kind of assuming this is a similar process, that you can standardize something that benefits all development, not specifically the Downs, but maybe a certain subset of industrial development, like light industrial. So again, I'm just here to listen, learn, and share with my fellow counselors when we get back to the chambers. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. And welcome, Jennifer. So you've signed in. We've just kind of, just to catch you up, we've got the general overview of what we're discussing. And then, right now, I've asked Rocky and Dan to kind of give us some perspective on their thoughts and also kind of, you know, some of the reasoning behind, you know, they get to be the applicant a lot of time. It was in front of us and Dan, their points of view too, as we go through this. So that's where we are. All right, Dan and Rocky, go ahead.
Thanks. And thanks for having this workshop. I really appreciate it. Speaking of workload, you guys already have a huge workload with the regular planning board meetings. So hopefully, this can help in that regard a couple of months down the line. But again, I appreciate taking this item up after it being introduced a while back. I think Tom and Jay summed it up really well. From my perspective, it is something that's pretty common that I've seen in the neighboring communities for industrial, light industrial uses. So from a kind of a competitive standpoint and end user standpoint, I think it certainly would benefit the town of Scarborough, Innovation District, and also other industrial zones if the kind of the review process playing field was leveled a bit. Because I know Saco, Portland, Gorham, the kind of the communities that see a lot of the same end users have that administrative process. So that certainly could help attract maybe more of the light industrial, industrial end users to Scarborough. So I would see that as a benefit through this process. And I think the other kind of thing, and the board's been living it recently, all the, a lot of your hard work is done at the master plan subdivision stage. So, you know, you've really kind of worked through those bigger issues, access, storm water, traffic, et cetera, in through with the design guidelines that we have for Innovation District in particular, it's become pretty formulaic. It's become pretty straightforward in terms of design. So I think that helps applicants. It also can help staff in terms of review. And I've found that with planning board reviews, obviously agendas are long and meetings are getting missed. So there is a delay for some end users that can't move forward, but have the design already kind of worked out. So advantage would be that those projects can move forward without competing for your time, which is on the items you really need to dig into. You really, really need to spend that time figuring out versus the ones that are, again, pretty formulaic, pretty, pretty well baked based on the upfront work that the board did through subdivision and master plan. So I think the end product, development-wise, is going to be the same. You've got a great staff and very attention detail-oriented staff. So I think the reviews will be faster, but the end product will be, will be the same that everybody's going to be proud of. But, you know, kind of enable the board to focus on those, those other items that are less straightforward and need your, need your review. So I guess that's my perspective from it. Rocky may have some others, but I think it could be a good move that benefits everybody.
Yeah, if I could, if I could jump in, I echo everything Dan said. I think that, you know, this, this would add, add an element of predictability for timeframe for applicants. That would be really helpful, especially for us at the Downs. We, you know, it's, through no fault of the board, I commend you. You folks do a lot of hard work and put a lot of hours in. But when an applicant sits through a meeting or two and doesn't get a chance to get heard, it really hurts them and it hurts our ability to get, you know, get a project going and get it started and actually get it done. And then ultimately, it hurts the town in the end because it, you know, it just takes longer. So we think that this is something where there's a pretty good set of ground rules already set. We've got a professional staff. We really feel like they could, they can handle it. And then our applicants can meet more often than the planning board meets and probably get things actually started in the ground quicker, which would help us certainly meet our, with the town of Scarborough. So that's, that's about all I can add. You folks taking the time to think about this.
Thanks, Rocky and Dan. Rachel and Roger, there's actually a public comment ability here. Do you mind wait, holding off on those questions till we allow public comment? Is that okay? Yeah. All right. So with that, I'll open this up to public comment on this topic. Is there anyone here that wanted to speak? Please use the raise my hand feature.
I will say, there's no one on the attendees list. I think we've invited in our public.
All right, awesome. Okay, so Rachel, I did see your hand up first. So Rachel, would you like to go ahead?
Yeah, I'd like to ask Dan. Dan, you said something about the, about items that are less straightforward. Could you give me some examples?
Yeah, sure. I mean, you know, obviously, you know, the level of detail you go through and the board goes through with master plan for the Innovation District, establishing all the different expectations of the district. And then subdivision that establishes even more expectations and details around engineering, stormwater, access points, et cetera. So it's pretty, the, the box is pretty well-defined in terms of site plan for a light industrial user when an end user comes along. I'm thinking of basically all other development in town. You know, typically, a site plan comes in and it's on Route One or on Payne Road, doesn't have all those other design elements finalized, doesn't have all the other review criteria figured out. That's what I meant, is your typical site plan application hasn't done that upfront work that the Innovation District has. And it could be true in some other areas, but I'm just thinking of Innovation District, all the upfront work that's occurred.
I'm still not clear what you, what you think are items that are less straightforward as far as the Innovation District is concerned, because they, what I, if you can't name some, then you're telling me that nothing in the Innovation District really needs to come before the planning board.
So the way.
That's what I, that's what I mean. I'm saying that the Innovation District is straightforward and therefore administrative review is likely appropriate. That's what I spoke earlier.
Okay, so that there would be nothing to do with the Innovation District anymore that would require the planning board? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that around, I think what Jay was suggesting is.
Yeah, no, I'm asking what you're saying.
Don't need commercial design standards. Commercial design standards could apply to a lot in the Innovation District if they're triggered. And those are like, if there was an office building, for example, is allowed in the Innovation District, it needs commercial design standard review. I believe the staff idea is that that would still come to you because you would look at the applicability of the commercial design standards for that land use, when you wouldn't look at it for a light industrial building, for example.
But would we look at it for an apartment building or a building that we just looked at in Lot Six, which was a half incubator on the bottom and the apartments on the top? What would our role be in that?
Well, I think.
Go ahead.
If I could, Rachel, I think what, that's one of the things we're hoping to get at tonight, what the board, what the applicability, if we, you know, moving forward, understanding that there is interest at the council level of trying to bring some language forward, what does the board think the level of applicability would be? So happy to continue on the conversation, but I just wanted to be.
Well, and I understand, and that's why I'm trying to find out where the developer sees the, I'm not, I don't think there's really a bright line that nothing is included or everything is included. And I think what we're trying to do is to find where both parties essentially are comfortable saying, here's administrative and here's what gets brought before the board. So with the Innovation District, since we have seen some buildings develop in there, it's, it's helpful to me at least to use how we approach them to get the sense of what would be different. And once we can understand what would be different, for instance, in the case of that hybrid building, then that starts to lead us into some, some of the areas where we might get involved or we might not get involved. So I think a conversation really has to do some exploration, especially with the Innovation District of what this means. I mean, I have my notion. It might not be Dan's notion or Rocky's notions or Roger's notion or your notion. So I think a full, a real exploration of that will help us focus in on what, what might need to be changed and what we might want to say, no, you know, this really does come before us. Because right now, I'm not entirely clear. So the discussion's helpful.
I'm the least educated around the table here in this discussion, but one way to look at it might be to identify a subset of the permitted uses in the Innovation District. There's a number of permitted uses, but then there's a subset that don't have design standards that apply. So I'm not saying that that's the way to go, but that might be a way to define what, what can go the administrative review track and what needs to go back through the conventional planning board process.
So let me explore that for a minute, Tom. And we have now seen three buildings that are labeled as incubator. Or basically, for small businesses that might want to move out of their garage and into a larger space and then, you know, not quite ready for a full building for themselves. So we have, we have three of those. And as I look at the designs, there's a lot of similarities when you're dealing with something that's incubator. As we have, as we have seen them presented to us through, you know, through the various, the Oyster LLC and Lot Six and Lot Seven. We've also seen something like the car, the throttle club, which is really sui generis. I don't think we're going to see another throttle club come in, but we are likely to see more incubators, incubator buildings. I mean, that's a, that's a possibility. So I kind of like the idea of starting to focus on the types of buildings, especially once we've seen how one works, to be able to say, yeah, so if another incubator comes through and the design and the function is essentially the same, then maybe that's not something we need to take a look at, although we might want to see the very first one. So that we, we understand how it works. And I, I don't know if that's the, the direction, but I do like the idea of kind of separating out some of the, some of the functions.
Yeah, I think you're right. I don't have the answer, but I think there needs to be a very bright line and very clear and understandable line as to what can go administrative review and what can't. So it seems to be use matters and maybe something around whether design standards apply could be ways to start to define that line. For what it's worth, I think, I think the additional of the residential units into the Innovation District kind of muddied the waters a little on my end. And I say that only because there are buildings that are going to go in that clearly won't have to meet commercial design standards, but it's possible that directly across the street have residential units. And what does that do? So I get that some warehouse-style building is that we're going to require us to really review if it's got enough shutters and windows in place. But, you know, what does it do when you have a residential component onto a light industrial commercial area in the street? And should we be careful, not necessarily careful, should we make work a plan like that is in front of us? Because the other portion of this, like, I'm probably concerned about is the public comment ability. So, you know, whatever ordinance language gets drafted is going to be able to incorporate the public comment and notification of a project that comes into the area. So, and I think that's going to be a challenge if you're trying to write up something. And then I also think that, you know, and that the other part of this is, I remember going through the marijuana ordinance and allowing medical marijuana manufacturing and things like that into this district. And with the addition of residential, are we making a potential, you know, are we creating a potential issue in, in the residential area there where you might be next to an end user that is, you know, manufacturing, maybe creating odors? And yes, I know their ordinance is in place, but are we creating a sticky situation there as well? So, like I said, I, with the addition of the residential units into the district, it, I almost feel like the board input oversight and commenting on it becomes more critical rather than, than the backend administrative side of this. So that's, I think those are the big challenges that we'd have to try to address in anything that's written up for proposal, you know, because devil's in the details and we all know that. I would say that I think, and this is probably just more of a general question. When, when you gentlemen, this is more kind of Dan and Rocky and Jemel and Jay as part of the process, when you guys make a submission plan and there's a, you know, a couple pages of notes for cleanup, right? You know, you've got some notes, you know, this, this side, that walk's not wide enough, this one. Is there a potential to reduce that portion of the time spent in front of the board where there's a capability of you to have a back and forth structure on the details that can get cleaned up before we see, have a public, you know, I'm just, I'm spitballing here. So would, and that's not necessarily stuck on the three-week timeframe, show up in front of the board. Is there a planned cleanup that can be taken place on the back of this and then it shows up in front of us? So when a plan comes to us, it's, you know, 95% there already.
I can jump in on this one if you want, or do you want to talk?
Absolutely, yeah.
Go ahead, Jemel.
I will say that staff does offer a five-week review process that includes staff and peer review prior to it getting to the board. And a few of the projects you've seen have gone through that. And I think that does really help streamline the board's review. Typically, they come to the board a little cleaner than the first submission. And I know Dan and Rocky have experienced that through their subdivision submissions. They've pretty much done that for, for all of them at this point, I think. So that process does exist. I don't know if it's exactly formalized, but it certainly can be.
And I'll just sort of add just one thing to, you know, even that process certainly does help clean some things up. But even when there is a resubmission, frankly, when Jemel sends out our staff comments on Wednesday or Thursday, we typically, most applicants, I'm not singling anyone out, I'm saying most applicants, call Jemel, call Angela, and try to make changes to those plans Friday and Monday, right before the meeting, where staff has other things we're trying to attend to and our memos are out, plans are in the board's hands. It's, it's really challenging. So the only way to sort of address what you're talking about, Nick, would be to not put something on the agenda and then sort of meet with the applicant. But, you know, we find that it's often helpful to go to the board because while there may be small cleanup things, there's usually two or three points of, you know, the applicant wants to do, you know, X, Y, or Z, and we really need the board in your judgment capacity to weigh in. And I think the way I've been thinking about this, and we'll certainly dive into this a little bit more as we go through the memo and talk about the applicability and, you know, the public review process and all that, is really about trying to identify those type of projects where a lot of those qualitative type decision points aren't there. Again, that's where I start to think about those type of uses that maybe don't trigger commercial design standards. Because that's, you know, ultimately, that's why we have an independent, you know, volunteer board of citizens to do this, to sit in judgment. But it's when we can get down to projects that really are more black and white, do you meet the standard? Do you meet, you know, space and bulk requirements? Do you meet stormwater requirements that are set and structured? Do you meet lighting capacities that are set and structured? I think those are the type of elements that maybe we could think about. But I do think, you know, just in terms of streamlining, I just, I already sort of answered it, it's already sort of a, there's this tight window between that submission and staff comments going out to really try to make any further adjustments before it gets to the board on Monday night. But that's my, that's, that's staff's sort of thought on it. And we're often pushing back on applicants to say, yeah, we, we hear you, you have a new, new idea for your landscaping plan. Bring that to the board. Feel free to tell the board, hey, we've seen staff comments and we're going to address it. We don't have time to review it and be okay with it or not before the meeting on Monday.
A few hands go up there. Roger, Dan, could you, Dan, Rocky, did you guys have something to quickly respond to there?
I was just going to quickly respond to the residential piece. I totally get that. I, it's a bit of an anomaly in the Innovation District and it also triggers subdivision because residential triggers subdivision. So that would be, that isn't something that, that we at least expect or would want to be a streamlined review. I think it needs board review and, and consideration. I think after our first review, we made some improvements to, based on board comment. So I think it's, it's really more from our perspective about kind of the light industrial uses that don't need design standards, that all the hard work, and I guess in our opinion, is, has been done in terms of designing for those lots and provide some kind of predictability in terms of review timeframes and is similar to what other communities are doing, you know, industrial, light industrial. So, and having.
I guess my, my put being though is that you could have a project that qualifies as that light industrial and go through like an administrative process, but directly across the street from it might be that residential component. And what are they looking their window, out their window, what are they seeing? And whether or not the opportunity to comment on that project. You see what I'm, you know what I'm saying? Like, so you can come in with Lot Six and then across the street is Lot Ten. Lot Ten might be approved already. You might have that residential component above it. And then to come in with across the street Lot Six and it falls under a criteria that says this can go through administrative review process. What I'm saying is, is how are you going to overcome that in language?
I think.
This is going to be an audit language draft and how, that's the challenge, I would say.
Yeah, I think that's one of the questions that I hope we can get to tonight. It's where, what's the board's feeling on having the public notification, an opportunity to speak on if we do administrative approval? I think, you know, as we sort of work through some of these, I have, you know, really sort of laid out four or five really sort of questions that will help us craft that language. So as we sort of move through sort of general questions, I hope to have the opportunity to sort of work through those. Because I think when we answer one question, it helps, helps inform what the next question is, if you will.
Rachel?
Yeah, I want to agree with you, Nick, because one of the, the things that I thought, again, and it helps me to think through what the board's role is in maybe a little general terms, but I, part of our role is to look at the whole, and look at the whole Innovation District, not just at that particular building that somebody wants to put up there. We, we're looking at how it fits, who its neighbors are, who its neighbor, if there are neighbors, that, that's something that's not, that would be very difficult, I think, to put into language how we do that or what we do, except we really do. You know, when we're looking at it, we're saying we need more shrubbery over here because what's going in here needs that extra buffer or needs the connection to, to a trail. So we, one of our roles really is to look at the gestalt of the Innovation District, not just at the individual plan. I'm also going to make a slightly snarky comment, and that is some applications that I've seen, not necessarily present company, would go through a lot faster if we weren't dealing with an item that says roughly, the staff continues to urge the developer to do X, Y, and Z. And when it, that gets to the board, what I'm thinking is, this developer really isn't listening to what the staff is saying about the codes. this, this developer really isn't listening to what the staff is saying about the codes, about the standards. And the developer, a smart developer listens to the staff and understands that the staff has got a good sense of what the board, how the board reacts to things. To, you know, whether it's, are we going to go for a, a decrease in the parking aisle width? And the answer is probably yes, because we frequently do. Or the, the width of the, of the driveway. But when, when the staff brings things up and the developer ignores it for to the two consecutive submissions, I'm starting to say, I shouldn't be seeing this. This should have been taken care of. The staff is doing the right thing. The developer isn't listening. So, I, I do have a bit of a concern when we start with administrative review is thinking about what happens when the developer isn't listening. At what point does something, no matter what it is, come to the board? Because the developer isn't listening, even though it might be something that we seem to have settled before. And it could be the use of baller lightning or, or lighting or fourteen-foot high, fourteen-foot high versus twelve-foot high lights outside. You know, there are times when the developer just kind of says, I don't want to do this. And so, all of a sudden, the board is saying, yes, but you have to. And you should have listened to the staff. So, we do need to think about, as this goes through, where, we do have administrative review, where we end up finding a, a, a good way to approach that. What happens when the developer just digs in his feet, over her feet? What do we hear?
Karen or Tom, I see it was a race.
I, I'll just, I, I think, I, I think we've always thought of administrative review as where there's, there are few things like that. But when you get to a roadblock where staff has said, you know, our ordinance list, our, our instructions are for administrative review, you need to do X. If they don't want to do X, it, it goes to the board, particularly if there is some discretion. And I, Jay, is that?
That's one of the items in the memo that I want to work through. It's what, what is the process? Is there a, is there an appeal process that if staff doesn't, you know, says to do X and the applicant says no? And that, that, that admin review team denies the application, that it goes direct to the board? That's fairly typical. I, I think another thing that we've talked about as staff is, are there certain projects where staff might look at it and just say, you know what? This just feels above, above the scale of what we might be comfortable reviewing. And I can think of, there's a, a business that's looking at occupying an existing building in Washington Avenue. And Karen, I look to you how public that is. I can't remember if everyone knows it's a.
I know, let's not, let's, let's keep it.
Anyway, there's someone looking to occupy, it's, and it would be above the scale of what I think staff would be comfortable reviewing. And you all would agree, trust me. But they really very minimal changes to a site outside of adding parking. So, I think those are, again, that's part of what I want to dive into, that, you know, we're really looking for direction as we think about if, again, if, if the general concept is, yep, we should draft some language. We really want to get some of those directions from the board on, on a couple of these items as we work through these tonight.
Roger, I've seen your hand up a few times.
You got to wake me up. I, I, I'm kind of sympathetic to the developers here. And when I, when I raised my hand initially, I was thinking of, of Lot 54, what's going in 54. I didn't want to mention the name. I didn't know if it was appropriate to mention the business name. But I think you all know what it is. And to me, that would be, that would be an example of what you're talking about, I believe, right? And, and I think what Rachel, when she first initially brought up the residential units on Lot 6, that would be almost like a trigger for the planning department to say, maybe we should bring the planning board in on that. But we got, we, you know, there's, there was, start off with 54 lots, I think 54 lots. There's probably like 50 now because of the combinations. I think we have some great examples. Now, I think Lot 54, which is before the planning board next Monday night, that would be an example where you, where they, where Rocky, Rocky, Dan could, you know, illustrate to us why that may be able to just go right to the planning department instead of going before the planning board. I think that would be a good example. And I think, I mean, we still have, what, another forty, between forty and fifty, forty-five lots there to be developed. If they're all going to be basically like the Lot 54 and the ones that have been developed so far, to me, I can totally understand, once you go through the plan development process and set all the guidelines and, and the parameters and everything, then, then I'm comfortable with allowing the planning department to move instead of having these tremendous delays in getting some of this stuff developed and going through all the permitting process. In, in terms of, just let me make a couple of other comments while I, while I have the floor here. Public comment, I think that could be at the beginning of the plan development process. Once, once everybody understands what the rules are, that could come in and talk about it, not with each individual lot that's being developed within the development. And in terms of Rachel's comments about the word urge, when I'm looking at staff's comments, if I see a word like shall, that's pretty definitive to me. That means it's got to be. When I see the word urge or recommends, there's a lot of leeway there as far as I'm concerned. And if the developer can make a cogent argument as to why they want to go the way they want to go, I don't have a problem with that in, in terms of making a decision on that. So, I, you know, when, and I can think of a, you know, a project that on Route 1, that we had some strong recommendations, some strong urges, say, but they argued against it. And I think their argument, you know, won the day because it made some sense, at least from my point of view. So, anyways, those are, those are my comments. So, again, again, if we, we can use Lot 54 as an example of what you're trying to do. You know, I, I think that might help to set some guidelines, like Rocky, you know.
Rachel, so your hand up. Wait, Rachel?
Yeah, I, Lot 54 is an example, is a good example because it's essentially a building that we've already approved. And it's simply moving, one, one building on a black, a back lot is moving to another back lot. And the, the only issue from my perspective that's left, because it's essentially the same building, is, is the sighting and, and the access, and, and that's kind of pro forma. Once that's determined, and that's something that can be determined, I think, through planning in that case, I'm, you know, I, I almost don't need to see it again. I appreciate seeing it. But essentially, we've already said it's just fine. So, if there are cases of movements of building from one lot to another, this may happen as, you know, different, different circumstances come up and it's more advantageous for somebody to move to a different lot and more advantageous for the developer. There's, there's another, I mean, there's another element of, of decision-making. Do I need to see a building I've already approved? Once again, no. Not if the staff is comfortable, not if it's on the same element, a, a same type of lot. And if the staff has taken a look at the sighting, the electricity, the utilities, the driveway, the road, and, and essentially is, is comfortable with that, then, then I don't need to see that. So, that sort of falls into the category of repetition. Once we see a similar designs, how much do we need to see again? And I think we, we could see less, certainly.
You know, in, in the Innovation District, I mean, there's, there's some pretty stringent guidelines already. Setback, landscaping, place settings, placement making, I mean, and things like, I mean, there's, there's a lot of already established. You know, certain types of roofs, certain amounts of finestation, depending whether it's a front lot or a rear lot. I mean, I think there's some pretty, you know, strong guidelines already for the, for that district, so.
Rocky?
So, I, I just want to add that, you know, I think about the Innovation District. And if you think about the residential subdivision portion of, of this, the Downs project, where we come in, we get a subdivision approved, there are permitted uses that can be done on the lot. And then we work with the staff and, and we place those houses and we build those houses. The planning board never sees it again, never gets another bite at the apple, if you will. I kind of think of the Innovation District as the same way. If we're doing something that's pretty simple, straightforward, permitted use. If we need another subdivision approval, such as when we do a mixed-use building, we're going to have residential over commercial, you know, that's a trip back to the planning board. But if it's a straightforward, you know, building fit, you know, Lot 54, the building fits on the lot, you know, we've got, unlike our residential subdivisions in the Innovation District, we do have strict guidelines that the staff would have the guide to follow. And so, I, I feel like a lot of those buildings could be handled by the staff very easily. Anything that they think, you know, is maybe a head-scratcher, boom, it goes back to the planning board. If it needs any other type of approval, such as subdivision or anything else, I don't know. I can't think of anything else, but whatever it might be, it goes back to the planning board. If, if a developer gets to a point where they're working with the staff and they're at loggerheads, and the developer's saying one thing and the staff's saying, no, we really think you got to do this, it goes back to the planning board. But I think there's a, there's a way to do it. And, and I was thinking about the comments about the public input. And I think when, when you, there are situations where you do need, and it's appropriate to have public input. But I think about those single, single-family lots, we don't get public input on, you know, us placing those houses. Lot 54, what do you need for public input? It's, it's, it fits on the lot and it meets all the criteria. Assuming it meets all the criteria and the staff decides that it does, it moves forward. It's only when you're doing something different than what we've already planned, what we've already pre-chooed with the planning board, you know, it's outside of those ground rules that we've set through our design guidelines that are specialized to the Innovation District, then it, then it needs to come back to the planning board. Just my.
Also, I, I just want to also waiver requests. And, you know, whatever you're drafting, if there, there's a waiver request, I don't know how comfortable I am with staff having the responsibility and the onus on them to be granting waiver requests without going through a planning board process. And we know that you guys might come in because you want one, one less parking spot or, you know, square foot of pavement, for all we know. And that's, that's not going to keep in the spirit with what you're trying to accomplish here. So, we have to figure out a smart way to work around a process like that. So, I, what, my whole point of this is that this, the devil's going to be in the details and it's going to be how this is written up. And it's going to really make or break whether we can move forward. That vein is, are there examples from Portland or somewhere that has a process like this? And is there feedback that can be gathered from how it's worked there? So, we don't fall into maybe a same mistake pattern from their experience. And then I would just also add that, you know, as far as a process goes, if you had this administrative approval process, A, that it works to, A, address the public comment worry, B, make sure the planning board is still having its oversight authority to some extent. Could it be to have, and that's almost like a consent item, and a section of the agenda that says administrative process? And you could read off the six that staff has vetted and approved and bring them up for, and, and still provide the materials to the planning board that evening at the top of the agenda? And at least have the opportunity in the board to read the project name, ask if anyone from the public was there to speak, and then have a, a one vote through from the planning board on a kind of a bang-bang right down the list, kind of a bullet vote as these projects go through. So, at least you're capturing maybe the public comment, the, the planning board oversight process of it. You know, is that, I don't know, a process used anywhere else in Maine or Massachusetts or who knows where? You know, I mean, has that, something like that, you know, akin to a consent item?
I, I will say the one thing, Nick, in, in talking with, with surrounding towns, it, they all treat it so differently. There's really, it's, there's no, there isn't great commonality. Some do it in, in all zones regardless. Some do it only in those zones, as, as already been said, in sort of more industrial, light industrial. Some do it upwards, you know, no more than 5,000 square feet of disturbance. Some say upwards of 40,000 square foot buildings, and don't worry about this. So, it, it's really so all over the map. Some have it just approved by the planning director. Some have a, a team, a whole administrative review team. And so, I think, you know, as you were saying, these are the things that I was really hoping to get guidance from the board tonight on some pretty distinct, direct questions. So, I can, so as staff writes the language, we understand what direction the board would like. So, at some point, I'm hopeful to be able to work through the memo because it, as we answer one question, it sort of leads to some other, you know, sort of things follow a little bit, at least in terms of how I've been thinking about potentially crafting language. But again, before I do that, really need to have some direction.
If I could just follow on that, and Nick, I think those are really great points. And I think Portland, maybe out of any of the communities, could be a good model. And I'd say that because, number one, maybe other than Scarborough, they have a bigger workload, at least they have in the last three or five years in terms of planning board review. And that's not including the industrial, light industrial stuff that they see. So, they're, they have a big workload, but that's already exempting out kind of the industrial, light industrial review. So, they could be a good, out of the communities, they could be a good group to ask in terms of, okay, how's planning department and/or other departments deal with those, those administrative reviews, if you want to call them? And how does that relate to their kind of review load? So, just in my experience the last few years, prior to only working on the Downs, I had some applications before them. And, I mean, a consent item approach, you know, that could be something that, that could be a trial, because you, you can do that now, I would think. It's still a planning board approval. But basically, staff is reviewing the application, they're doing what they're doing now. They're just putting it on the agenda for a consent item. So, that could be something that you try as you think about making amendments and say, hey, well, is it working for staff? Is it working for the planning board? Look, you know, these are the ones that are getting approved and we would have made the same decisions as staff, for example. Or, or you can say, yeah, these are the ones that we'd like, the consent items, these are the ones that we'd, we'd like to review. And maybe that's a way to kind of help try it out before it's an ordinance. Or as Jay and, and your, your team group work on the ordinance changes. So, I think those are, you know, great ideas and maybe that's a way to proceed.
Does that mean, did you say my name?
Yeah, I saw your hand up, so.
Okay, yeah, um, first, I just had a question about public process. Does that, does that require a public, like interactive public forum, or like in-person public forum? Or do we have the option to offer something like a written comment period where you might be able to handle comments coming in from the public outside of a public meeting? Do you know what, do you understand? Do you know what, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yep, I think, I think I do. I mean, I guess that's one of the questions that staff would have is, is it, would the anticipation or expectation be that we provide the same level of public notice that we do now? You know, butters within 500 feet? And if so, you know, do we, you know, if it's a administrative review meeting, is that open to the public? Or is it just truly they're able to write things in? I think those are the type of direct directives we're really looking for this board for. You know, do we feel like, again, I, I think a lot of that's going to depend, at least in my estimation, as to where is it that we're talking about applying this activity? I know so far the focus has really been just around the innovation district and that's where the conversation has started. And if it ends there, that's fine too. But I, you know, are we thinking about other zones? Are we thinking about in the, you know, not just the industrial district? I don't know what planning board members are thinking, maybe this should be applicable townwide based on certain thresholds. So until, I think really understanding those things might help also inform what level of public input we need.
Okay, um, I only ask because I, you know, for the, um, I was just curious about if there is a way to have a public process or offer projects up to the public for input outside of, um, our, aside from otherwise attaching them to our regularly scheduled planning board meetings, which would be subject to sort of a much less frequent schedule. So that's, that's what I was curious about, you know, the written comments. And, and again, I think that, um, you know, to, to be further defined, but say for example, the process that you're talking about Jay, so if applicants were still required to notify butters within a certain distance and sent out information to that end and got a bunch of, you know, in the town received a bunch of feedback, perhaps that could also be, or I guess positive feedback shouldn't necessarily be a trigger for going to the board. But you know, if, if there appeared to be an issue or concern by the community that direct of others, then that might also be a good reason for the board to hear, hear a project. And you could get to that point. If we were able to do some of that outreach ahead of time and outside of our otherwise scheduled meeting, if that makes sense. And then I just wanted to make a comment too about Portland's process. I, I work for the city of Portland. I do not work in the planning department. I am aware of their previously very heavy workload. There's been a lot of development happening there for a long time. And I, I, not to make what is already a complicated situation more complicated, but I would just advocate for being thoughtful of other town, uh, input from other town agencies or staff outside of just the planning staff. So for example, I, I, I work in a public works department and deal with a lot of our transportation issues and topics that might come up in the right of way. Typically, these are things that my department, we have a liaison, my department does get some input on those items through the full site plan process. But we do not always get, we do not always see the same information through administrative reviews. And sometimes we don't need to, but other times it is just kind of helpful for us to, to be made aware of some of those things. So again, Portland, a different animal in a lot of ways, but I do think it's important if staff, you know, for at least thought to be given to whether or not other internal town departments might have comments on something that would otherwise just be administrative review.
Roger?
Yeah, at the beginning of this, um, when, when you talked about the introduction of this discussion, it was, we're talking about the innovation district and also townwide. And I would recommend that we only, we just stick to the innovation district when we're talking about this change. Because, um, I mean, we, basically we don't, we don't have to worry about the public input at this point. When we're talking about strictly the innovation district, we seem to be getting hung up on how, how we're going to deal with the public and get their input. And I, you know, we're not really confronted with that within the innovation district. So in addition to that, if we, if we make a change and it's effective all town, you know, townwide, I mean, we may find, we could use the innovation district as a, as a template to what we want to do in the future to adapt to that. But the innovation district is, is a great, is a great example for us to apply this right now. And we can eliminate, I think for the most part, other than at the plan, the planning process, planning development process where we get public input. So just my two cents on that.
Yeah, Roger, to that point, I just suggest that I think the industrial district actually is even more to that end in terms of butter concerns, if you will. And perhaps even light industrial could be argued. Whereas innovation allows residential, as you know, so there, there's probably more potential for conflict in innovation than is in industrial or light industrial, just.
Right, but do we, I mean, do we have any other major light industrial developments going on in town right now? I'm not aware of any.
Well, there's the light industrial district up around Beetred Speedway. There's not any active development projects right now, but there's a, a zone that allows industrial, light industrial uses.
Okay. Existing companies that are expanding, you know, take Abbott, for example, they're adding on to an existing building. So those are the types of things that some might do administratively.
All I'm saying is right now we're dealing with the innovation district. And we're hung up on the public comment portion of this whole process. And I'm saying we could use that as an, you know, we limit, for the most part, we can eliminate the public period because it doesn't really apply to this district. I don't believe it does anyways. And then once we, once we go through this and find out where, what's, what's working and what's not working, then we can go townwide if we want to.
Yeah, believe me, I'm not advocating townwide. I'm saying selected zone.
Whatever, you know, whatever you want to do. But instead of, instead of, for instance, what's, what may work for the innovate, innovation district may not work for over there by, what, what'd you say on Home Throw?
That's the light industrial district or the industrial district, you know, the, the park essentially in Washington.
I mean, we're getting, we're, we're, we're talking about this public comment period.
And. Yeah.
And I think what we're, what we're trying to deal with right now is the innovation district. And, and to move these, move these projects along in a more streamlined fashion, so.
Ken, did you have something that you wanted to say?
Yeah, if you don't mind, a great discussion. And again, you, you know how it works. I'm a single counselor, so I don't speak to the whole council. But I can pretty comfortably speak to the center of the council and maybe Tom can either correct me if I'm wrong or suggest I'm right because I do believe you met with leadership today. The town council is looking at light industrial extended to all developers in all areas that allow light industrial, not the innovation district by itself. Just want to bring that point out because I keep hearing just innovation district. And I would hate to see a lot of folks use a lot of time then bring it to the council and it would just not going to be received very well. So thought as a reminder, I would mention that.
Thanks.
Yeah, I would concur. The, the sentiment of the counselors I've talked to is that there's applicability of this concept in, in districts other than, or in addition to the innovation district, specifically light industrial and industrial.
All right, I'm, I'm just gonna, I want to refocus us here shortly. So I'll let Rachel and Karen say something real quick. But I do want to pull up Jay's memo on the screen and let let's take it bullet by bullet, wade through some heavy issues because I think they deserve some guidance and something will need to come out of council and staff that can be reviewed as far as language and things. So let's start real quick with Rachel and Karen, a last word before we pull up the memo.
Yeah, um, this is in response to Ken and Tom and, um, the, I, I hear what you're saying and I think there's something that we can work on there. The, the issue with the innovation district, I guess, or the, the value of it is it is new enough and we've been through the master plan. And, you know, we, we hashed it through and we hashed through how it was all going to be done. So because it's a, it's a greenfield development, it's a lot easier to try and find those common elements that could be subject to review. When you get to the industrial district, past the holy donuts, there's, there's so much there that's already built. What was the original master plan? What do we, what do we know about it? What, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't know immediately where to begin. If a new development came, I would have to look at past developments. I, I just, I just don't know that there are separate criteria there. So while we can and should look at other developments, say other industrial areas, I think they're going to require a slightly different conversation than the innovation district. Simply because, as I said, the innovation district is brand new with standards that, that run across all of the buildings. So there may be common elements, they very likely are. But I think we need more of a background in those other districts, what's, what's required there? Or what the, what, what would happen with the vacant lots, how they could be built on? What were the, what were the thoughts to begin with, with those developments? When you've got a brownfield area, you've got some different, you've got some different elements to think about.
And the only thing I would sort of back to Rachel, you know, the devil's in the detail. Like when I pulled up, uh, the town of Gorm has administrative review for site plan. And they have, under administrative review, if you want to submit, it's an eight-page, very detailed checkbox. It's either, here's the standard, it's either yes or no. There's no discussion. You have to check yes or no for every one of the items on the list. And I think that's where it goes back to, you know, do you meet this standard? Do you meet that standard and, and prove that you do? So there's a record there of why they're going through the administrative review and everything that's expected of them. And so it's very black and white. You either meet it or you don't. And then I guess I did have a question too, and this may go back to, to Jay. You know, when we're talking about the industrial district, I'm not sure what the public notification and is in the industrial district? And whether or not the public hearing is different when we're in the industrial district?
Nope. So all site plans get notified the same, regardless if it's in the industrial district, the TVC, the B3, same as any residential subdivision within 500 feet. And then the planning board allows public comment on every item. So no, no difference.
But it's not, but does our ordinance require a public hearing?
We, we require public comment. I mean, it, you know, public hearing, public comment, if, you know, matter of semantics. You know, this, we hold public hearings for zoning changes really is the only thing required to hold public hearings for. But public comment ostensibly hits the same point, right? People have the opportunity to speak.
Just ask a question.
Again.
My understanding is subdivision notifies the butters in 500 feet. I didn't think site plans did, so.
It does.
Site plans wouldn't notify butters, I guess, in any zone, as I understand it.
No, we do. We notify, but it was, the ordinance was changed, I don't know, within the last year or two.
Well, there you go.
Yep. Things are, things are happening outside the Downs.
Okay, so Jay, like the, the recent redevelopment on Mason Libby, you know, the ice, the ice project man?
Yep.
Now, those, those abutters were all notified, is that correct?
That is correct. Yep.
Okay, now, up in the innovation district, when it, when something like when Zoom's going in, are the, are the existing property owners notified?
Uh, I, you know, Doreen has a, a, Doreen does that for me.
Yes, they are.
Okay, and Jamel watches, so there you go. Thank you, Jamel.
It's a little different for the Downs just because some of the parcels are so huge. So it's a different, um, not strategy.
Talking about just, I'm talking about just within the, just within the innovation district though, not anything else.
500 feet buffer around all property, but.
So a good, a good example, Jamel, if I could, would be so for lot 54, Zoom Drain, lot 53, which is where Duke is construction, they would have got a notification. But I can't think of another lot name, but you know, uh, two or three of the lots are probably owned by, you know, M and R Holdings or Crossroad Holdings or whatever. I think they just get one notification, right? They don't get, we're trying not to notify 75 lots that are all owned by Rocky. He doesn't need that much mail coming to him. Just once is probably good. I hope that helps.
All right. So I think we kind of segwayed into it. Do you guys mind if we just run through the memo and, and answer or provide guidance to staff on their questions that they have?
You guys want me to share? Or you want to do it, Jeff?
I've got mine up and I can read the question out loud and then that way we can all still kind of be easier maybe for me to see people raising their hand that work okay. So the question, the first question they had was as in which zones and district administrative review apply? So if we were to do this, are we talking Downs only, innovation district only, sorry? Or is this something that we would want to be a policy or ordinance that includes other areas of town? And why don't we just kind of jump in member by member real quick and give a quick opinion on that? Rachel, you get to start us off.
Oh, thank you. Um, I, I, I would say right now we start, start with the Downs, but be prepared to move in phase two into the other districts. Once we've gathered more information, the other light industrial.
Thank you. Roger?
Before, before the memo, you're referring to which, what memo is that?
Jay had a memo come out and he had a list of questions that he wanted us to focus some discussion on. Jay, did you have somebody you want to jump in real quick with?
Yeah, and just Roger, I think I sent a memo yesterday afternoon dated October 1st on this item where I laid out four or five sort of directive questions. Yeah, Nick, I did have a question. I just, I just sort of wanted just to understand, I'm hearing from, from Ken, I can remember distinctly, Tom, I think might have mentioned it as well, that there is interest on council of thinking about other zones. And so it might just be helpful to explore, Rachel, when you say you, you're thinking about the, starting with the innovation district, is that principally because of the, the master plan process and the overall subdivision sort of review process that's occurred there? And is there something that concerns you in particular? If we were to talk about, um, other industrial properties that otherwise don't have those sort of qualitative standards, you know, where we don't have commercial design standards, don't apply industrial districts? Is there, just want to be sure I fully appreciate what that, what that difference in your mind is.
Okay.
The, uh, I, I guess I do think ultimately that the industrial districts, industrial and light industrial districts should all be covered by administrative review. I'm however concerned a little bit about some of the details. And when I say kind of start with the innovation, really take a hard look at what would work and how it would work because that is a greenfield site. And the second, the, the next discussion becomes how do those, are there anything special about a brownfields district where a lot of the work is going to be renovation and reconstruction because of the age of the building, buildings? Um, and that then, uh, the innovation district, everything going up is new. These other, uh, light industrial and industrial districts, very little at this point, new construction is going on, although that may change. And the standards for renovation and, uh, redevelopment of the use of a particular area, um, might, we might want to look at those in a slightly different fashion. But I do think we need the, I, I do think that the goal is, um, a, an administrative review ordinance that would cover, uh, that would be comprehensive enough to cover industrial, light industrial.
Nick, could I just ask a quote, clarifying question as you're talking about applicability?
Absolutely.
Maybe I'm the, maybe I'm the one that doesn't understand this. It's, to my way of thinking, as regards the innovation district, let's say there are 18 different permitted uses, I don't know how many there are. This administrative view would apply to a certain subset of those, not all of them, specifically those industrial uses or light industrial uses. That's my understanding of the conversation. I want to make sure, at least I understand it in perhaps for your benefit of your members, that you're all thinking similarly as you have this discussion.
That's kind of, that's what I'm thinking.
Okay. But I, I just, I didn't want to assume that, thank you.
Thanks, okay, Roger.
Um, well, first of all, I can't find the memo, trace memo. I have, I have a memo dated 2018.
I can share it if you'd like, Roger.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I'm pretty sure I sent it to the full board last night. I'll apologize if you weren't on that email. We'll obviously take a look at that, but, um, so, let's see.
Can you send it to me right now, Jay?
I can.
And why don't you do that then? If it's not too much trouble.
All right, so in the meantime, I'll ask Jen the question, how's that, Roger?
That's fine.
All right, so Jen, which, uh, zones and districts would the administrative review apply, in your mind?
Um, I, I think that, on, or I understand that the initial request here has, has sort of come on behalf of the innovation district. But just recognizing the, um, demand in development that we've seen and our board has seen of late, we, we should reasonably expect that anyone outside of the innovation district should want sort of this, more streamlined stuff, oh, review. So I, I think that, I do think that that makes sense. However, I, I also see value in what, um, the, the differences between that, that Rachel pointed out in that a lot of, you know, development that we could reasonably expect outside of the innovation district would probably be, um, renovation in nature and, um, that those within the district, are by and large going to be new developments. And so perhaps just being mindful of that difference as we craft, uh, criteria would be important. But, um, generally, yes, I think that we should apply this to, um, any of our industrial, light industrial areas and not solely, um, just the down, the innovation district, sorry.
Thanks, Jennifer, Roger.
Yeah, um, I would, I guess basically I would agree with that. I think whenever you have a, um, a major project, you know, such as the innovation district, let's say the industrial park that was just starting up from scratch, and you had a set of guidelines as we do with the innovation district, I, I, I don't have a real problem with the, uh, with the administrative review process. Unless, you know, other than if, um, if something unusual were to be presented, such as the residential, you know, the apartments. So, you know, I, I understand what Ken was saying about the town council, but I just, I, I don't, you know, personally, I think we should, we have, we have an experiment right here where we can work with this thing. And then we can adapt it, either throw what doesn't work and, or add something that does work and apply it to the rest of the, um, rest of the town at some point when it's, when it's, um, when we feel we have it down pat, but.
All right, thanks, Roger. Uh, Rick Minkin.
Um, yeah, I, I, I think for me, administrative review for new construction, where we already have design standards or guidelines. And I think it's important to understand the distinct difference between, you know, a code, a standard and a guideline. When we deal with issues that are code-based, well, that's cut and dry. You got to do it. And standards are really designed to give you the, how you go about meeting that code. And then you have guidelines that are just arbitrarily put before a bunch of people and they say, okay, uh, I like that set of guidelines. Um, and I think with innovation district, those guidelines have been established. And so it does make it a little bit more palatable to do administrative reviews because, um, the guidance is there. And so definitely the innovation district. And then when we talk about adding the light industrial districts and the industrial districts, and you already have a built environment, um, doing renovations on an existing building, I think is not something that you just want to, you know, put it through real quickly because it could have character changes. It could have impacts on what's already been built in that environment. So I'm coming out with the idea that, you know, if, if this is new construction, it's the first building on the lot and it's in an area or in a district where the guidance has been put forth already, like the guidelines in the innovation district, then I think the staff should have the ability to, to push things through a little bit quicker if the developer, uh, works with the staff and says, yes, I'm meeting these, uh, standards and codes and, uh, we're all in agreement that this meets the letter of the, the law. The, the sticky part comes for me is when there's waiver requests in there, even on a brand new lot that never had a, a building put on it. Um, and I think those can kind of be done more on a, like, Nick, I kind of liked the suggestion on a consent agenda, where when there's these little waivers that need to be put through, um, yeah, be done rather quickly. That's where I'm coming out. I, I don't really think just doing the innovation would send a good signal to everybody out there that we're trying to push the, the, the innovation district, we're pushing those projects through fast, we just want to get something built in there. Um, I, I think optically, if we expand it to the other districts, it, it makes it a little more palatable for, you know, the design and developing community in, in Maine. That's, I guess where I'm coming out.
Thanks, Rick. Is that, that, am I missing any, anyone on the board side here for feedback? I'm scrolling through my panel, I think that's all. Uh, so I'll, I'll get real quick. I, I tend to agree that it should apply to other areas that could fall under the same standard. I, I think, I think we got to be a little careful here. Because I, no one can deny the importance of, one, the entire project to this town, but to this district to the project. So, uh, but I think we just need to be careful that, uh, we guard against other developers thinking that there's, um, you know, a, a certain process for one group and not another. You have to watch out for that kind of thing, especially in town. I think you need to be sensitive to it. So, and then as far as, um, you know, developing a process, I think that's where you want to go. If, if there are, uh, projects that can be built in the industrial districts that can go through the same administrative process, I think we should encourage that. It, you know, not, so that's where I would come down on it, that I think it should incorporate more than just this one innovation district. At, at the end of the day, a pol, any policy we set forth or process should incorporate more than just the innovation district. That would be my two second. All right, so thinking we've worked through that one. Number two was what size project would qualify for administrative review based on square footage of a building amount? Or lot disturbance? It's a good question, there's a lot to it. Rachel.
Uh, and to me, I, I, I think it's, it's the lot disturbance. It's not so much the square footage because you could have, um, a small footprint but in a four-story, five-story building, um, which would then have a lot of, a lot of square footage. A lot of bulk. Uh, I like the, the concept of, um, taking a look at the, the impervious area and the disturbed area. Now, Jay has given us three suggestions, I think, no, four, building size, impervious area, disturbed area, or some combination thereof.
I like to cover all my bases, what can I?
Well, yes, you did, thank you very much. At this point, I, I think the, I think the impervious area and the disturbed area is something that's easier in a sense to, to quantify than just say any building of 10,000 square feet must. Um, because 10,000 square feet on what size lot? Uh, in how many floors, uh, and how much is being disturbed? It, it's, it's tough to separate. Um, but looking at the disturbance and looking at the impervious actually gives you a sense of the size of the building. And I don't know that I've really made myself clear, but those are the two elements that I think are, are the most important, especially, uh, in areas as we know where it's sensitive, where it's close to, um, where we're getting close to the wetlands where we might, a developer might be building on something that has an impact downstream. Uh, and the size of the building actually could end up being determined by what the lot is and what the amount of disturbed area would be and the amount of impervious area needed uh, for parking and roads into it. So as you start to look at, um, the projects, the, the size of the building actually should be the last determiner in terms of what we're looking at.
And, and Nick, if you don't mind, if I, if I could, the one thing that I think Steph, we've been, been thinking about is, you know, as we talk about the innovation district, clearly, you know, I, and not just the innovation district, but that's the, the example that's right before us. And frankly, anyway, I'll leave at that. You know, I think when we talk about lot disturbances, it's sort of what's already been approved for lot disturbance and impervious coverage. Um, and so I think, you know, through that subdivision process, through that master plan process, the innovation district's been sort of well-established as to what can happen on each lot. And our sort of thought would be when they look to exceed that, and I think lot six and lot seven are a pretty good example, right? They sort of had an approval through the planning board about 80% impervious or I think it's impervious coverage, or maybe it was disturbance, whatever it is, 80%. And they seek to exceed that, go up to the 85, that's a trigger we would see that would go back to the board because that's something the board's already dealt with. When we start thinking about the, um, industrial district, let's say, I don't know that there are any empty lots left in Wa, on Washington Avenue, but for the sake of argument, if there were an empty lot on, on, um, you know, down on Washington Avenue, you know, sort of, once we identify, let's say it's 20,000 or 40,000 square feet or whatever you guys sort of think is the right number of disturbance or impervious, that that would have a, you know, once that lot goes over that number, it would go back to the board. But in the induc, in the innovation, uh, I'm sorry, uh, uh, in the, yeah, in innovation district of the downs, if there's, obviously it's a greenfield, right? So these developments are clearly disturbing more than 10, 20,000, 40,000 square feet, whatever that case may be. But that wouldn't necessarily come back to the board if it meets the other parameters. So I just wanted, you know, so I think as we craft this or think about it, that might be, um, the way I've started to think about framing the ordinance to sort of say if you're in an already approved subdivision, then it's whatever was approved as part of that. If you're a standalone lot, then your trigger might be this. And so I just want to sort of, you know, identify that, uh, you know, staff's already been sort of thinking about, yeah, we're going to have to create some differentiation. But yet, as long as we understand what those, what we think the essential triggers are, we can start to craft something and then debate those further down the line again, of course.
Yeah, I, I like what you've laid out, um, Jay, I like the way you're approaching it.
Thank you, Rachel.
Roger.
Yeah, um, I, I don't know if this would be appropriate, Jay, but, when, when the, um, when we first started to consider the innovation district back in, I believe it was December 2018, would, and, you know, we went through, we, we established all the guidelines and everything of that particular district. Would, would it be appropriate for the, um, planning board at that point to make a decision that we're going, you know, based on everything that's been established for an example like this? That, um, any future development, as long as it may, it, it follows those guidelines that have been established at that, at that earlier meeting, um, the early process. It could be, everything goes through the administrative process unless something unusual were to come up, such as the apartments.
So you're really seeing it making, well, that, hmm, so I'm, I'm thinking.
Would that fall under the, the use that's not really being covered by the administrative review process?
Right, so I'm, I'm really thinking about crafting an ordinance. And what I'm hearing, Roger, your sort of approach would be to address this as conditions of board approvals, which I think, you know, one are sort of more, are, can be a little trickier to track and aren't quite as clear, um, set as quite clear expectations. But what I could see is for saying, for example, again, the way I'm envisioning drafting this is saying that, you know, this is, these uses, uh, or, or this process might be eligible in the industrial district, in the light industrial district and in the innovation district on those lots previously approved as part of the, um, regulating plan dated March, uh, 1st, 2018, I think it was. Yes, I looked at it pretty recently. But, um, and so it would sort of establish that, yes, it's that board approval in the innovation district that sort of, it binds those lots to it. So I think it's sort of a, looking backwards to the innovation district. And I think what you're talking about is looking forward. And I guess that would be the question, uh, does the board feel that this should be applicable generally to the innovation district or not? But certainly if there's land in the innovation district that comes forward as part of a subdivision process or, you know, um, I think that would be a trigger that would certainly come before the planning board and wouldn't be an administrative process. I also, you know, as staff sort of laid out here, when we think about the thresholds, it's, it's staff's opinion, you know, Jamel, Angela and I had up to, have been talking about this quite a bit, that if something triggers a state or federal permit, that's probably something that should go to the board. Um, and it's really, that's a one acre threshold at, at a minimum. Uh, you know, certainly if board feels it needs to be smaller, that's fine. But, but for staff, we feel like, once it triggers a stormwater permit from, from, uh, from the state or it triggers a DOT traffic movement permit, that is probably a project that's of. that is probably a project that's of, of significance that clearly to staff's estimation goes beyond that line that we might be comfortable having sort of delegated authority to review. But of course, if council feels otherwise, we'll, we'll accept whatever level of authority they want to give us, but so I don't know how, how fully I answered your question, but.
All right. Jen. For you, wait a minute.
Yes. Sorry, I'm reading. I agree with Jay in that any, I do think there's merit in sticking to the anything that would require any of those state level permits should probably come also before the board. And I know that there was comment earlier about, I think Rachel brought it up about the difference between, we're just talking through the difference between impervious and disturbed area. Can you, can someone just remind me offhand the size of those innovation district lots?
They're generally an acre. They're designed, the typical lot size is an acre.
Okay. So I, this isn't exactly what you asked, but I'm going to mention it before I forget to. I, I do think it's important to include a public input process in in any project, Billy. And I don't think that that should adhere solely to whether or not a project is adjacent to somebody being residential, because I, I can see the situation. If I was a small business owner, for example, you know, I, I am hopefully interested in neighboring small businesses and would probably want the opportunity to, to comment in a public way and be notified in a public way about other businesses that might be coming in to join me. And that might be, they could be very helpful, or maybe it's, it's a competing interest or presents a concern, something like that. So I just, I do think that that is important. I don't know that it needs to be the whole public hearing openly, you know, in, in-person public meeting format, which is sort of the question that I was asking earlier, but I do think it's important to offer those types of abutters the opportunity to be informed of, of projects coming and the opportunity to provide comment on that one way or the other. Aside from that, let me pull this back up. I do think that the flipping back and forth. You know, I don't have, I, I think that one of these memos, I know, compared square, building square footage in surrounding towns and how that relates to administrative review. But I also agree with the point that Jay provided a memo, which is that, you know, we probably shouldn't use solely that. And I know that's not what we're talking about here. But I do think that the combination thereof is important because, you know, you might have a large building with a very little amount of, you know, impervious area outside of that, or you could have a very small building with large impervious, or you might have a big disturbed area that's going to go back as pervious area, but if it's a big enough disturbance, we, you know, we should be looking at that too, I think, particularly in some of these areas that are sensitive for stormwater disturbances and erosion control concerns and things like that. So, you know, I certainly, I think it's easy to tap the top end of that, as pointed out in the memo, that, you know, anything requiring one acre or over for those disturbance levels and/or the state permit requirement should trigger board review. You know, I think it is a little bit harder to define the bottom end of, of what that is. I don't, I don't have like numbers to that end in my head. However, I will say that it is helpful to see some of the building square foot thresholds from other communities. So perhaps if there are similar thresholds for areas of disturbance, that might be helpful for us to to see as well. And if that's included in this material, and I both feel that I apologize. I also think it would be important to have some thought given to traffic generation. So what type of traffic a development might be bringing because again, with some of our older or previously developed areas, that, that might be the big one, you know, with a new, with a new lot that's undeveloped, it might be your, your disturbed area that's going to be the biggest or the most stringent trigger for this type of review. But, you know, certainly something that might fit all other, might fall below all other defined criteria for administrative review. If that's a huge traffic generator, that's definitely going to have impacts beyond just that lot. And, you know, I could see that being something, you know, are there off-site mitigation things that might be wanted, for example? So that might be another point to consider about whether or not a development like that might be a good topic for the board.
And Jen, you have just given your experiences, because I think, you know, obviously having Angela here on staff and talking with, you know, other engineer, trying to understand the, the lot disturbance, you know, we can talk about, and again, there's really no right answer to any of this. There's not. But I'd be curious to your thoughts. Obviously, you know, when we talk about DOT traffic movement permits, we're at, what, 100 trips or 99 trips or, you know, some number? Is there, you know, is, is half of that, I mean, do you have a sense of where, what type of scope? Or in your mind, do you think would be the right trigger? Is it 50? Is it 20? Is it 75? Is it the full TMP?
Yeah, that's a good, again, not coming up with an answer straight off the top of my head, but I would be interested and willing to go back and look at, you know, a handful of recent applications, for example, ones that, that I might think of. But, you know, and I guess I would open that to the board, the rest of the board as well. Are there other projects that we've seen recently-ish where the, the traffic generation piece of that project was particularly of interest? And what type of trip generation level do we see there? I know, for example, the one that does come to mind, you know, coffee, coffee's a big trip generator and you can very easily have a small area of disturbance, a small impervious area and a huge amount of trips. And that, on some recent projects that we've had, I know has led to conversations about intersection, adjacent intersection capacity, roadway capacity. Should we be looking for left turn lanes, things like that, which just, you know, do kind of expand, I guess, in my opinion, beyond kind of the limits of that lot and impacts, larger impact to that end.
Thanks. Thanks, Jen. Rick.
Yeah, you know, I was reading through the, the memo that Dan had prepared back in 2018 and looking at, you know, how City of Saco has it at 30,000 square feet, Portland is 20,000 square feet. You know, and given, I'm just looking at the innovation district and Dan just said they were around an acre, so you're looking at, that's roughly 43,000 square feet. I don't know, to pick an arbitrary number, you know, it's always better to start small and work up later on as we, you know, refine this administrative ordinance, or whatever we're going to call it. But for a new building going up there and having a threshold of, you know, let's just say 20,000 square feet and below, maybe we, we can get through an administrative review and not have to include everything. So I, I, I don't know. I just don't have enough experience in, in knowing what's the right fit here. But I suppose if you start small and find out that it's really not making any efficiencies, then we just get bigger. I don't know. So I, I really can't draw a conclusion on this. Sorry.
It's okay.
Did we lose Nick? I don't see him on my screen. I know Tom said.
Nick left.
I think, yeah, unfortunately, I think we lost his connection. I know Tom left. He sent me a text and he said he was sorry, but he had something else to attend to.
Hey, Jay.
Yeah.
If you don't mind, I have to drop. So I would just like to leave with some parting words, if you, if you don't mind. I, I definitely want to see this succeed. I think the objective of this is to actually come up with some kind of crafting on an ordinance. I also sit on the ordinance committee. We all know how long it takes to pass an ordinance in municipal government, especially with the way the current workload that our ordinance committee has got. I mean, this is probably September of next year, to be honest with you. So just as a suggestion, because again, I, I want to see this successful and I really like what Dan Bacon said. If you could come up with the thresholds or that will keep things in the administrative review, use the innovation district as the proof of concept. Grab one or two, push it up through the review process, and as long as the planning board is doing the final approval, my understanding is we don't have to change anything at that time, you know, at that, then. But at least we can, you can prove the concept out, make some adjustments in that iterative process. As long as the planning board has the final, final approval, I, I'm not seeing how we would have to either modify or create another ordinance until we get the process down straight, that you can port over for any light industrial, for any developer. That's just a thought. Because again, it's going to come into the ordinance committee, it's going to get hung there. And I, and I know, I think you're trying to craft some, some verbiage for an ordinance to come to the ordinance committee, and that, just a thought. And having said that, I have to leave.
Right. I, I, as the vice chair, and since Nick has dropped off, I'd like to thank you for your participation tonight, Ken, and
Well, thank you.
I, I guess complicated working on the ordinance committee and I don't envy Jay trying to craft an ordinance, but I, I think we can take a look at perhaps some, some things that we can do within the, within the guidelines, within the, the, the rules that would allow some streamlining to go through. Not clear what they are, but I suspect we can find some ways. So thank you.
Good luck.
Let's look at, we have three, three more elements that are listed in that section that I think we've kind of gone around and talked about them a bit, so it may move pretty quickly. So I'm going to take chair's privilege, which I just invented, and start it off under the permitting authority. My, I, in organizations, you always need somebody to blame if things don't work. So my suggestion would be that the the review be vested in the director of planning, but that the, in consultation with the other departments and those departments be named so that be clear what those departments are, that the department, the director of planning must get information from. Once we, you know, 15 years in the future, we will probably have a, or may have a different chair of director of planning who may decide just to run off on his or her own. And it's always good to have some checks and balances. So naming those departments provide, provide some of the checks. I would suggest that that the, the planning director bring forward to the board, just simply a report on, on what came through. That, that's, and that all of those departments have been consulted in reaching that decision in, in coming up with what he came up with for the administrative review. The appeals, I'm a little unclear on that. It says, should staff and/or the applicant have the authority to transfer an administrative review to the planning board in certain circumstances? Certainly the staff should have the authority to transfer, from my perspective, to transfer the material to the board when a developer says, I ain't going to do it. Or they simply cannot reach a decision. I would suggest, and I'm not sure how exactly it can be worded, but again, in terms of ensuring that people believe that the, the process is open and clear, that if a developer feels that the review decision was arbitrary, capricious, or in manifest opposition to various zoning, to various codes, that the that the applicant could as well bring an, an appeal before the board of whatever the administrative review is. I think if the planning staff does what I know they can do very well, which is work with the developers, the developer certainly ends up understanding that it's to its, its advantage to work with the staff and come to a decision before it gets to the board. So I think that's, that's a way to take a look at the appeal. And the public process, I, I'm hearing that I think there is a sentiment for some sort of a butter notice to go out. And I may, I may be wrong, but some sort of a butter notice of administrative review to, to go out with at least a an opportunity for written comments at the point at which the the material, whatever is left from the administrative review might come before the board. Certainly there is an opportunity for somebody who thinks we're in a butter to come and make a public statement. So that's, that's my thought on those three areas. And I think if we can come up with the thoughts of the rest of the, of the board that's here, then we'll have done some pretty good work tonight. So let's start, Roger.
Rachel, I don't know if you can see, but Nick has.
Yeah. I was going to defer to Nick.
Nick, in your absence, we settled everything. Thank you very much for your attendance.
I heard. I'm just going to watch the football game. So I'll, I'll make it, I'll make it quick. So you guys, you guys, you've been great. I'll, I'll, but I'll just say this, I, I still, still very partial to the idea that whatever process is established, the administrative review process, it's squared away with staff, but it ends up on agenda like a consent item for, and I think, and the reason I would advocate for it is one, one, the permitting authority still lies within the planning board. So we as citizens aren't, you know, pushing off a burden to staff to make the ultimate decision. Two, it, it allows public to show up and comment on it. Three, if there was an issue, we could request that it be removed from that consent part of it and onto the back end of the agenda, meaning if there was an issue that the planning board identified, worked with some decision in the background, it would still have the materials onsite that night and the opportunity for the applicant to be heard that evening, and then it could be approved in that same evening if we squared away any mess on it. So basically the opportunity to remove it out of, it's kind of a mechanism process that the board still holds that ultimate authority. that the board still holds that ultimate authority. And that, that would be my two cents. I think that's that I would be most comfortable with a process that looks like that. Roger?
Um, Nick, Nick, the only question, I guess the question I have, when you say pulled out and put at the end of the agenda, what do we do if it gets 10 o'clock before we hit that? And we've gotten, you know, the applicant came thinking it, uh, you know, there was a consent and all of a sudden uh, something, something halts it and the applicant finds out it has to come back three weeks later.
Yeah, I'd hate just for that to happen because that's not the intent behind the process. Um, but I think it also just, uh, while my, my mind's running, it would also give us a chance as the board to approve. We don't have a waiver outstanding or being approved, a standard having to be approved by staff that doesn't necessarily apply when that's parking space. So I think that under consent item, we actually check the public comment box, the waiver box, permitting authority box, and then on top of it, we still maintain that ability to have a full hearing on a project if we had concern. Now, I think you bring up a really good point, Rachel. And saying like, hey, they may not be prepared to, uh, go that evening. But I think it at least shows an effort on our part to get them heard that, at that same night and maybe knowing the fact that it's, it's pretty much going to be a lot of the downbeat. Um, and they probably have other projects on the, on the agenda that evening. I don't know if that would make it a little easier. Or maybe not. Maybe it's just, hey, you're going to be on your toes. You might want to show up for the first first 10 minutes of meeting. You might, you might have to speak at the end of it. I don't know. But it's a good point.
Yeah, I, I think we just need to make sure that we cover it, you know, in any ordinance. Um, although I, I'm, I'm not sure that this needs to be part of the ordinance, A, I guess it does so much as kind of board procedure. Um, where, where we can determine how we handle that while the ordinance concern, the ordinance specifies what's checked off that we approve.
And then we can. I mean, certainly I'll, I'll think about, and I'll contemplate this as part of the ordinance, but I mean, the thing I think about if I'm in the applicant's shoes, they might've just spent six or nine weeks through the administrative review process. And sort of battling through, you know, different issues and come to a resolution and and then if it does, as, as was said, sort of you know, just thinking about, um, at the last, you know, if it does come to planning board and for an item, you know, for some reason it gets pulled and then not heard for, right, another three weeks. The sort of the, um, the, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Not reliability, but just sort of the, the, the predictability from the, from the developer side, I do wonder about. But I certainly hear what you're, I, I hear what you're talking about, Nick, and I'm almost wondering if there's a way to think about it early even, um, to sort of bring it and say, these, these are the projects that are going through administrative review process. And, you know, though things may not be fully answered, at least the board can look at it and say, wow, here's a red flag for me. Um, and so just, but we'll certainly, we'll certainly play with different concepts over the next couple of weeks.
Yeah. So I mean, I guess there'd be two aspects to that. One is it would have to raise a red flag with more than 50% of the board members in attendance. So and two, if it's raised raising a red flag with 150%, did it get that far anyway? And how did it not, how did you not just pull the plug and say, this should really be a planning board item? Right? I, I, I guess that would be my point behind it.
Yeah, I was just going to comment that I think it's a great opportunity to kind of do a couple trials with this and, and then work out the, the kinks. I mean, I think you have the consent items already, you know, and you use it for the really simple changes now. Um, and if, if it were an item that we'd have on the agenda, we'd be there, we'd be prepared to speak with the board. Um, I think there's one next Monday, you know, it's a a minor subdivision amendment. We're going to be prepared to speak if other things come up. So I think the applicants have a responsibility to be ready to, ready to talk about an item, um, whether it's a consent item or a regular item.
Yeah, and, and I can appreciate that as well, but I, I guess I, I sometimes come back to, um, and I know I've worked with enough of you on the board. Um, you know, my memos are, uh, very, and Jamelle has followed the same pattern, deferential to the planning board. Cause I can hearken back to a number of years ago, having, you know, board members say, boy, staff, your, your memos are far too directive, you know, leave this, leave this to us. We're, we're the deciders. Um, and so, you know, it's always walking that fine line and appreciate that this board is very supportive of, of staff. And, and so I think, you know, laying out the process of consent with this board over the next couple of months is something we could think about. Um, but I would want to, you know, at some point we need to sort of really figure out and codify what we're, what the expectations are. So I just mentioned that as something to sort of put in the hopper, not as a anyway.
Jennifer?
Um, I I, I see the value in the, the consent agenda item model, but I am just curious if that feels like, does that feel expeditious to an applicant? Does that, because if you're still waiting for, you know, say if staff has generally, you know, you've worked through however many, um, iterations or in a few weeks of back and forth with staff on particular items and the, the staff feels that, okay, you know, we're comfortable that, um, the board would be supportive of this project at the point that it's at. But maybe you still have another week or two weeks until the next meeting. Does that, you know, just to have that consent agenda heard? Um, I'm wondering if that achieves the same purpose. I, I guess my understanding of seeking this additional type of review would be to sort of you know, allow the, those discussions and approval to happen outside of the regular, regularly scheduled and frequency of meetings that we, um, currently have in particularly full meetings that we have, which I know is something that Rocky mentioned before was that, you know, this is a model that's being sought, you know, and one of the advantages to that would be a more predictable timeframe for, um, review and being, being heard and receiving an approval, um, on, on another way, it's fairly straightforward project. So I, I'm just kind of curious.
I mean, my, my perspective is it's sort of a bridge to bridge to that, Jen?
It might also, yeah, so it's a good progress.
There's sort of a ripple effect too, right? So if you have innovation district site plans that are full agenda items that are on your meeting, um, you end up, even if you're wildly in favor of everything, um, the applicant does the presentation, the board goes down the line and comments on it and you, you use time on that, then you don't get to other items. Um, there might be other industrial properties that you'd put on the consent too, like for, for the same reasons. And therefore you're able to get through all the regular items on your agenda, for example, or most of them. So it's sort of a cumulative effect, I think, in the, the amount of work and things you have to also review before the meeting. So if you're comfortable with staff handling certain ones, then you're able to focus your preparation on the ones that.
I would say too, I mean, I, Dan probably can test this. I mean, the fastest you're getting through us with these things is nine weeks. I mean, at a minimum, it's probably closer to 12 by the time you do the back and forth that, that ramp up to getting it to us. So so maybe it's, you know, in their world, it's, uh, we had four, you know, five weeks or four weeks of back and forth with staff, and now we're going to wait two to get on the consent item agenda. I think you're still three weeks ahead of the ball from where they are today. And then as Dan has pointed out, now I think it allows us to maybe get through our agendas quicker and, and not necessarily, you know, have one project that can, like he said, clog up the, the rest of the, the ones behind it.
Yeah, okay. Um, yeah, that makes sense.
Look, that's, it's my opinion. I, I just, you know, I think it could work, you know?
Um, that, I also think there's value in, uh, you know, points that Rick brought up earlier, which is that, you know, um, perhaps best to start with something like this. And if we figure out that, you know, maybe we don't need to see a consent agenda or something like that, you can always mo, you know, modify it, um, in the future, but that bypassing that step could potentially be maybe too big a leap. Um, so that's my thoughts on that. Um, and I, I I do think that, um, again, in terms of permitting authority, um, as I said before, I certainly think uh, circulation and input from other staff departments is important. I like the idea of having those defined, um, as Rachel mentioned. Department titles change, positions change, things like that. So I think outlining those would be helpful. Um, and, and maybe even like, or they're designated if there's another, uh, department that might have a consultant on board for, to help with the reviews or something like that. Um, and I think it's important to have, you know, the ability for both staff and an applicant to say, I mean, ultimately, right, I, I think that this is generally designed to help applicants, um, you know, it, it's more desire, I would think it would be more desirable to just have a staff level review. So they, they should want to, to, um, to do that and meet those criteria. And I'm confident that we'll get to a point that those are clear enough that, um, someone can tell pretty quickly whether or not they have a product, a project that's a good candidate for that or not. Um, but you know, should um, disputes come up or additional questions? Um, I do think it would be important for for either party really to be able to say, you know, I, I don't agree, um, or I, I would like to hear the full board's opinion on this. And for staff, that that feels like it would be, um, a good fallback, you know, if there was a, a project that was too complex or, or changes that came up or something like that. But also, um, for an applicant, um, you know, it, it would just kind of be supportive to the staff, I think, to, to, to have that be an option. Should there be disagreement? Um, and in terms of public process, I, I kind of spoke to that before, but I do think that um, I do think allowing people the opportunity to comment on new neighbors, whatever type that might be, um, or development adjacent to property that they own or business that they've built is important and, um, certainly open to you know, talking about what that looks like and what kind of timeframe is appropriate and things like that. But I, I do think that the, the process itself is, um, of value. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to not have the opportunity to speak on something, um, that was happening adjacent to me. And if I've been notified about it, I have the option not to chime in, but at least when I, you know, I've been made aware.
Thanks, Jen. Uh, come on, Ken.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm on the same page with, with, uh, Rachel and, and Jennifer. I think the planning director can assemble a an adequate team and knows what disciplines or talents are needed for a proper review. So I, I think that, that's fairly cut and dry for me. And the appeals, I, I definitely think that either entity, whether it's the planning department or the applicant should, should have the ability to, uh, bring it to the planning board if they so choose, uh, knowing that, you know, time is of, uh, is a factor. And so if they don't want to listen to the planning department and want to fight things a little bit, well, and bring it to an appeal, it's on their dime. Um, but I, I do think they should have that ability to do that and, and to stay transparent with the public. I, I I'd be hesitant to not have, uh, the ability for the public to make comments. Now, whether it's sending comments for administrative reviews, I could even go along with that. If it's going to be on a consent, uh, the comments have to come in electronically or snail mail if they still do that anymore. I don't know. Uh, but certainly, um, having the public involved, um, will keep us out of the fire. That's it.
Thanks, Rick. I think that was all the board members on that one. Is that correct? Roger went right? No, Roger?
On the, uh, on the permitting, I generally, I agree with Rachel on just about everything she said. I, I think it should be the planning director of planning with consultation with other departments. On the appeals, I think, um, either party um, should be able to bring it to the, um, to the board. Um, if they feel it's, you know, if they want to plead their case. On the public process, I, I, I think it's always good, butters always want to know what's going on next door to them. So I think that's, that just makes sense. And along with that, if I owned a business and there was, I got notification that something else was going in next door and nearby that I thought was totally incompatible with, with what I did, what I invested my money in, I would, I would make sure I touch base with the planning department and the planning board to raise my concern. So I, I think that's obviously a uh, everybody wants to know what's going on. On, on the consent form and everything, I, I, I think I'd defer it to Jay to try and figure out how to, how to do that too. So we don't get it, you know, bottling, bottling up the whole, um, process. We're trying to streamline the process and I don't think we want to create a, um, more bottleneck. The, the only other thing before I sign off on this thing is, have we, have we made a determination on number two? In other words, the, uh, what would qualify for the, has that been determined?
What I heard through the conversation was, I haven't heard a definitive number. What I have heard is that the sort of upper end, if you will, is if it triggers a state or federal permit, that's something I think we, I based on this conversation and sort of where staff was thinking anyway, we would write in as an automatic trigger. What I thought I heard from the conversation was that, yep, looking at some combination of building size disturbance and traffic is sort of the way to go. I think, um, you know, particularly, I think when, as I think about building si, you know, and I think what we could do as well is really think about the difference. I think there's a difference between a renovation site or a, you know, uh, improvement to a site in a greenfield. Um, you know, maybe when we there, there haven't been any definitive numbers laid out. Um, so staff's going to, staff's going to grapple with that and we'll, we'll throw something at a piece of paper and we'll see. We'll, we'll, we'll kick that around next time around. But, um, yeah, I'm sort of thinking, you know, I think I've seen in other communities where it's been, okay, if you're, and again, I've seen this very as well. It's, if you have an existing building, uh, you can expand up to, I'm just going to grab something, 10,000 feet, um, up to 10,000 feet or 50% of the building, whichever is greater or let, you know, something, something of that ilk. Again, I, um, so I could see that type of thing. Maybe we think about, you know, if we're saying, yes, it's going to, should be a combination somewhere of disturbed area plus impervious um, and building size, you know? Well, a 20,000 square foot building is likely to disturb more than an acre of, have more than an acre of disturbance. I, one would, could safely assume, maybe not. It obviously all depends. So I think, you know, you can start to think about, well, maybe uh, you use a certain building size as well as an area of disturbance size. And so, so I don't, I, I don't think there has been a definitive answer. I'm throwing out all sorts of just sausage making ideas right now, but that's sort of the pathway that my mind is. So if I So if I'm down the wrong stream, let me know. Otherwise, I'm gonna keep talking with Jamelle and Angela over the next few weeks. And we'll come up with something you guys can tell us we messed up on.
And if I could chime in, if I could chime in for a minute, I don't know if you can hear me.
Yep, we got you.
Okay, one of the things is listening to that too, I guess for my two cents. As, as Jay said, is Jay and Jamelle and I kind of try to craft something to put back at you guys. My focus is really gonna be making it as simple as possible. I think for the applicant's point of view as well as staff, getting into different percentages of the building. Or disturbed and, and trying to get into kind of more of a convoluted kind of. Equation to get to whether or not it meets thresholds. I guess my two cents is gonna be leaning towards probably disturbed area because that would also encompass your impervious area. And it would be a very black and white number. This is what you're doing. And it, it always is gonna come back with some cons. Cause I've seen that with other towns doing kind of these reviews is if the threshold is where someone threw out 20,000. We're gonna get a lot of 19,999 square foot disturbed area projects. But no matter what number you pick, you're gonna get that. So I think we just need to live with that and move on. But I guess that, I just wanted to throw that in there, that, that's probably gonna be where I'm gonna be trying to head towards. Is kind of some simple number that we can put in an ordinance that makes it very, a very bright line, as you said.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but. That's why early on I suggested we just focus on this particular district. And I'm under the impression, looking back at the December 2018 memo from Dan. That's what the developers envision, you know, going forth in, in, in this particular district. Because I don't know, I, I mean, this is gonna be so much, so many different criteria on all these different areas. I mean, you, you look at the different industrial parks, like a Pleasant Hill versus the Scout Row Industrial Park, they're, they're also different. Where the, the innovation district is, is, is not, it's, it's pretty. To me, it's pretty defined. So anyways, that's just my two cents. I won't say anything more about it, but.
I mean, if I could jump in as the, you know, the reviewer, I will say that it'll be pretty much the same for me. Gonna use the same standards for the projects. I just, you know, it'll be a little bit more black and white, like Angela said, in terms of, did you, do you meet the standard or not? And if standards can't be met, then maybe it's more of a board review than a staff review. But I see this as being as simple as possible, but still following the same rulebook, let's say. No different than a planning board reviewed, other than just, it's not going to the board.
Not, not that I'm gonna get too far into the weeds here. But I think just for staff, for when you go to craft this, you may wanna consider things like the timeframe that you have to respond. Onto an applicant. I think that might be wise to do that when there's an expectation level. And I don't know if it's gonna require you to. Have additional help. I mean, it sounds to me like you're. Probably busy if they keep using this review process. Does that make you busier? And just for that little nugget, I did, did catch a council meeting where there was a, an issue. Regarding staffing, so that throws something into the mix. Whereas if you're promising people a tighter timeframe and it requires you to take on more staff. Are you gonna go through that budgeting process? Just good for thought as you build this ordinance language. Which what you're doing to rotate behind the scenes. Just, that's it. Not that it warranted a big discussion, just a heads up. So. Anyone else? Any, anything else that we, and I'll ask that of Jay and Jamelle and Angela or Karen as you work forward to craft this. Is there any last opinion you need before we can wrap this up tonight?
Well, those were really the, the sort of key touch points that as I started to put, put my mind around this. That I, I really was seeking some direction on, I feel. Feel so we've got a little more clarity about what we're doing and appreciate that. And so we'll, as I said, this is something that will be drafted, drafted up and you guys will see again, you know. Obviously council, you, we, you heard from Ken, council leadership has a lot of interest in this. So we'll see what process they run that through, but you're regardless, it's gonna come through you minimally at, at a public hearing. That, you know, one of those required public hearings that we talked about earlier, Karen. But so, and certainly staff will keep you up to date when we do have a draft and it does go, whether it goes straight to council or ordinance committee. You know, I usually, I leave that to Tom to let me know what, what pathway that's going when it gets to that level. So we'll keep you posted.
Any, any board members with any final thoughts as they go upon their way crafting?
Crafting, we will go.
Well, I, I think it was, I think a very productive conversation. I hope it was. And that's it. So I guess I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor? All right. Good night, everyone. Thank you very much for your time this evening. It is appreciated.